Welcome to the June ninth, two thousand fourteen work session. Work sessions are more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are five items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into a city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Suzy, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Then if you'll call the first agenda item.
Our first item this evening is discussion of RZ thirteen twenty-two to amend chapter sixty-four, article seven, division six, Northwest Fulton Overlay District. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you have before you five items of text amendments that we'll be reviewing with you tonight. Let me precede my comments by saying that the planning commission did spend three-minute meetings reviewing all of these proposed amendments and in most cases did agree with staff changes. In those instances where they did not, we have so noted. Let me just give you an executive summary and then I guess the best thing would be to open it up for questions as you so desire. The Northwest Fulton Overlay District was adopted by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners in ninety-nine and amended in two thousand and three. Since the incorporation of the City of Milton, there have been minor amendments, but there have not been any major changes to the overlay. Therefore, it was staff's opinion that it was time to make some major changes and some of the highlights of these changes are as follows. Number one, we've changed the name from the Northwest Fulton Overlay to the Rural Milton Overlay. We feel that best reflects the intent of this overlay. Two, we have rearranged the organization of the overlay. We've divided it by type of use, not categories like landscaping, lighting, architecture, which is how it is currently organized, which we feel will make it easier for people to determine the requirements. So we've got them organized by use, like single-family, commercial, and it does create some repetitiveness, but I think for ease of use, it makes a more customer-friendly type of document. We've suggested that demolition permits no longer go before the DRB as suggested by the DRB. However, the planning commission has requested that demolition permits remain for review by the DRB. We've added single-family residential under the purview of the overlay with the following conditions. Requires a sixty-foot view shed, forty-foot undisturbed to twenty-foot to allow grading, but no structures. And that essentially is the rural view shed that we've talked about in the past that we wanted to establish. We've put a maximum percentage on lot coverage for single-family homes and that percentage coverage we propose to be twenty percent. We've amended the height requirement to a maximum height limit of two stories with the maximum height of twenty-eight feet from average finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve. Staff has recommended that verbiage be included to encourage barrier-free design, i.e. no step entrance, one bathroom door wide enough for a wheelchair, et cetera. Planning Commission, however, recommended that this request be deleted. Additional conditions that we added was to provide more flexibility in design of accessory buildings within the institutional uses, i.e. not requiring windows for gymnasiums or storage buildings for schools. Planning Commission, however, recommended that accessory buildings remain under the same development standards as primary structures. We've deleted the section on towers and antennas. This is because it's already controlled by chapter fifty-four telecommunications. We've also amended the map to reflect the area minus the crab-apple crossroads, which is now under the form-based code and therefore came out of the overlay district. We worked with the city arborist for verbiage to better clarify what is clear-cutting and timber harvesting. In addition, the planning commission had discussions regarding the prohibition of clear-cutting. And lastly, we've improved and added requirements for stormwater management. So those essentially are the highlights of the changes that we're proposing for this overlay district to be named the Rural Milton Overlay. And I'm certainly open and Robyn, I have to say, did a fine job with all of these changes. There's many nuances in here and she really played a significant role in helping to rewrite this, so we have to certainly acknowledge that to Robyn. So we're open for, and I've also got the city arborist here and the city architect for any specific questions as it pertains to them, so.
You sure you've got the arborist or is that his son? Someone looks a lot younger.
Less facial hair.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments? Go.
Kathy, on page five, in the matrix, planning commission recommended that the use permit for racetrack be deleted entirely.
Mm-hmm.
We're in an equestrian community here and it sounds like that would preclude harness racing or any type of horse racing. Was that the intent?
Robyn, could you look up the definition of racetrack and let's read it out so we're clear about what that means exactly?
Actually, we don't have a definition for it, but I think that the planning commission was thinking about more with motorized, you know, with engines and I don't think it occurred to them it could be, you know, equestrian oriented or...
I think racetrack would probably cover it, type of horse racing or harness racing.
Let me look at the use permit because that explains it a little bit as well, so. It states that the racetrack and spectator stands for animal tracks shall be located a minimum of five hundred feet from residential districts. So it looks like it speaks to some type of animal race, but I think their impression was motorized racing, so.
But the term covers everything, is it?
Correct, yes.
Now, what we could do is, if you wanted, we could just make this an equestrian racetrack, if that would suffice and clarify your concerns or something.
How about grayhounds?
Animal racetrack?
I don't know. We could definitely amend it. We have it open if that's what you would like to do when we get to that section of the use permits to make it clearer.
Think about that. And also, I'm probably the only one that would want a motorized racetrack here, so.
We have a little contention.
Well, I say that, but I guess what we might want to do is just clarify, you know, if we're not allowing a racetrack, say it's a motorized, and I'm not saying we would or would not, but, you know, if we put something that says no racetrack, but it doesn't take every, you know, it still allows other things to be done, you know, it doesn't, it's full-on racing or whatever, but doesn't allow someone to ride their own motorized vehicle on their property or whatever, that kind of funny stuff.
Okay.
Are you anything else? Karen?
I have a question.
Matt?
Just a question. Obviously, in our process, we've recently were looking at our whole conservation efforts within Milton, et cetera, as far as rural overlay and things like that, and obviously we've hired a consultant recently on this. Just curious if we're incorporating all of that as well in this too, as far as just an overall direction, where we're going with subdivisions and things like that.
Well, we are certainly incorporating within this overlay, but we're also creating a new conservation subdivision that you'll be seeing in the next month or so after the planning commission reviews it. So the idea is to coordinate all of these and, you know, putting the rural view shed in, for instance, is a way of, again, protecting some of that conservation land. So where we could, we are very cognizant of that in terms of these changes here.
So how did we leave the racetrack issue?
We'll need to discuss it, clarify it when we adopt this.
Do you want to bring some options, some optional language back for that?
Yes, yeah, but what I'm hearing is a non-motorized racetrack and we'll bring some, how we incorporate all animals, because I think it's worth it a question.
Get down to track and field and sport-type things too. You'd have to make sure it didn't step over into that.
Yeah, but we'll, at the next meeting, we'll bring revised language back to you before you vote.
Do you have anything, you know, motorized, non-motorized? Is there anything else on the racetrack that the way we look?
Actually, it looks like in the use permit, it only address, the only distinction it makes is the racetrack and spectator stands for animal tracks shall be located a minimum of five hundred feet from residential districts or AG one, used for single-family dwellings and two thousand feet from such districts for vehicular tracks. So it does contemplate both, so if it's, I guess you're, you know, if you'd like to just see it to be for animals, we could probably just strike out the mention of vehicle and maybe do a definition for racetrack as well for specific for Milton.
Sounds like a plan.
Karen?
I'm just a little concerned that we're getting a little too heavy-handed. And, you know, I think it's right to have design standards, but I don't want us to have every house looking too similar and every fence looking exactly, I mean, I don't want it to look like we're some kind of totally planned thing where creativity is not allowed. And when we say you don't allow any kind of metal gates, I'm not sure why that is, because we have a lot of metal gates or wrought iron gates and things like that in Milton. And I'm just making sure all the yards and subdivisions exterior, adjacent to an exterior street having equestrian fence, I'm just, like I said, I'm just a little bit afraid we're getting a little heavy-handed here and I'm, that, you know, we're basically telling people what they can't do all the time. And to me, you know, government is, that's not really the purpose of governments, to constantly telling people what they can't do. If people have good taste, then you would never have to tell people things like this, but we know not everybody has good taste. But my concern is we're getting just a little, a little heavy-handed with, you know, not allowing metal gates and not allowing, you know, requiring equestrian fences and, I mean, was there discussion in the planning commission as far as, are we going overboard with some of this?
Actually, it's already required in our general fencing that properties that abut an exterior street, let's say like Freemanville or Birmingham, shall have equestrian, shall have a four-board fence.
But are we saying that now for all? What streets is this required for? I mean, is it?
So it's any non-platted subdivision street, so, I mean, that's...
The main roads.
The main roads.
Yeah.
I mean, Birmingham Road, Hickory Flat.
Didn't we actually relax it a little bit?
I thought we, yeah.
Yeah, we relaxed it so that it did not include any interior streets.
Right.
But just the exterior streets.
Right. So currently, this is what the fencing section, which covers everything. It says fencing along interior streets, well, that's interior, but...
It says prohibited building components, components, it says, you know, metal gates are, I mean, obviously, we don't want burglar bars and chain-link nets and metal roll-down curtains, but it just, like I said, I'm just a little concerned that we're making everything look too...
Well, I was reading, excuse me, I was reading in what's already existing as a code in another section, section sixty-four two twelve, which addresses fencing. And it says fencing along exterior streets shall be as follows. Allowed fencing materials shall be three or four-board wooden fencing with wood posts. Fences shall not exceed fifty-five inches from finished grade. Fences shall be white, black, or dark brown and color opaque. Fences are prohibited. Chain-link fences are prohibited. Fences shall be set back a minimum of three feet from public right-of-way. And so that's what actually exists on the books and right now that was approved, I believe, maybe a year and a half ago. Actually, it was three eighteen, it was about a year and a half ago, yes.
Is that something, Councilman O'Thurman, that you have interested in looking at though, just to make sure that we're not going too far?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not going too far, yeah.
Maybe, and, you know, kind of review that before the next meeting, but staff be prepared that, you know, if you see anything in there that's, let's at least discuss it.
Okay, yeah, we'll...
If you see anything that's going much further than what we've already got existing, we can at least discuss it and decide to keep it in or...
Yeah, we'll make a list of what those are and you can sort of look at it, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Suzy, if you'll call the next item, do we have any public comment for the next?
We do not, sir.
Okay, you'll call the next item.
Our next item is discussion of RZ fourteen zero-one to amend chapter sixty-four, article one, section sixty-four dash one definitions. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you. This text amendment, as I mentioned, is part of the five text amendments we're reviewing tonight. And staff is making changes because there is a need to propose new definitions and amend existing definitions to better clarify the intent of the overlay district as well as the use permits that we're creating. So listed below are the new proposed definitions that are included in this amendment. They are as follows. All-weather surface, alternative screening design, artist studio, barrier-free housing, detention facility, drive-through fence, fence equestrian, impervious cover, lot coverage, mausoleum, non-structural stormwater management practice, rural or agricultural event facility, stormwater better site design, stormwater management, stormwater management facility, and timber harvesting. And I will bring to your attention that on page twelve, under the definition for fence, that we did find an inconsistency and would therefore propose on page twelve that where it currently reads that the height shall be a minimum of sixty inches, it really should read the height shall not exceed sixty inches, because we did find from field surveys that really most of the fences are in the fifty to fifty-five range. So we felt that there needed to be some wiggle room in there and so we would like to insert that modification.
Okay.
And we're open for any questions on definitions.
And that, what you just mentioned about the fence, that puts it in line with the definitions that were in the item we just discussed in thirteen twenty-two.
Correct.
Bill?
Kathy, on page four, definition of barrier-free housing. I guess that's the purpose of that clause there is just to identify or define it and not require.
Correct, and you'll see it somewhere else where it is a suggested requirement, not a mandate, but we needed to have what the definition was.
And it does say wherever possible.
Right, yes.
Okay, anything else? Suzy, if you'll please call our next item, and do we have any public comment for that?
We do not, sir.
All right, call the item, please.
Our next item is discussion of RZ fourteen zero-two to amend chapter sixty-four, article nine, administrative permits and use permits. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. This is another part of our five text amendments that we're reviewing and as staff is making changes, there is a need to propose minor edits to the use permit section of the ordinance. The planning commission did recommend that quarries and surface-mining sites and racetracks be deleted entirely, so I need to bring that to your attention. Staff has also included the newly proposed use permits, which we'll discuss next, for rural or agricultural event facilities and artist studios. Even though they are separate text amendments, they are included in terms of definitions here. So listed below are the major changes proposed in the amendment. One, the deletion of the expiration of use permits. Currently, right now, our use permits expire and we've been told that that is illegal, that they really don't expire. Even if there's no action on them, they're still in effect. Number two, we need to scratch that because we're a little ahead of ourselves. We haven't created the RR district yet. We will in the next couple of months, so you'll be seeing that, so we really can't make mention of it since we don't have a rural residential. Number three, amend the buffer requirements for various use permits as needed. Four, where appropriate, include the crab-apple or deer-fiddle highway form-based codes as required districts. Five, within the festivals or events, outdoor, indoor use permit, correct to the required access for curb cuts. And where applicable, include the requirement and citation of the night sky illumination So those are the highlights of what we've done to this section and we are certainly open for any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for staff or Kathy on this? All right. Move on to our next item. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
All right, you call that item.
This item is discussion of RZ fourteen dash zero-three to amend chapter sixty-four, article nine, administrative permits and use permits to create a new use permit for a rural or agricultural event facility. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and city council, you asked the staff to create a new use permit for this use to encourage event facilities within the AG one zoning district. Staff's proposed use permit is intended to take advantage of special rural characteristics such as natural features, historic structures and landscapes, open vistas and/or secluded pastoral locations. The standards are crafted in such a way to be flexible depending on the location and size of the subject site. Instead of a one-size-fits-all, if needed, buffers are determined by the mayor and city council. Staff has also recommended that this use permit be categorized under agricultural-type uses in the chart located in the Rural Milton Zoning Overlay District. And so you have before you the proposed special use permit for rural or agricultural event facilities.
Anybody? Start, Matt?
Yeah, just one quick question. Maximum number of attendees decided upon by the council on a case-by-case scenario, I guess we arbitrarily will come up with a figure as far as what that might wind up being for any event that comes up. That's, I just want to make sure that's what was intended in that.
Go ahead, get around. Actually, what we'll ask the applicant is they'll provide a letter of intent. So the intent is like if they ask for a hundred and fifty and you really want a hundred based on different criteria, then that's what that really means. It's not, you're not going to make it up, but ultimately, you'll have the final decision about the number, yes.
You'll have the request and we'll reserve approval the air day.
Yeah, right, and we'll have the fire marshal weigh in and everyone else, so that you'll have all that information.
All right, just a question too, that, you know, the five acres, is that a, you know, I assume they could come to us with a BZA or whatever, with a variance, you know, let's say it was a perfect site and it was four-point-nine acres or, but you feel comfortable five acres is a good minimum?
Yeah, Robyn did significant research in terms of this use and we felt, because of the parking requirements and the noise issues and the light issues, that five acres probably gave you a good buffer.
Karen, will you?
Yeah, I'm assuming that they will come before us before a use permit is actually issued and that permit we'll be able to decide on a lot of the very specific things, number of people and how many cars and things like that at that time on a case-by-case specific thing.
Correct.
It just seems like in some ways, the hours of operation kind of ought to be the same way, but I guess ten-thirties are, you know, if it's someplace that's, you know, away from, no residences anywhere close, it seems like ten-thirties may be a little earlier for that.
Mm-hmm.
And it almost seems like that may ought to be a case-by-case type situation too. If it's in the middle of a, or right adjacent to a subdivision, ten-thirty may be a little late.
Would you like us to look at making that more flexible?
Yeah, I think maybe give it a little bit more flexible, flexibility in there on a case-by-case basis if we're giving flexibility for other things. You mean, you could say it would, hours of operation shall be nine AM to ten-thirty PM unless so designated by council as part of the permit or something like that, just so that...
Yep.
Or maybe a day of the week.
Yeah, I mean, ten-thirty on a weekday is probably late, maybe too late, but ten-thirty on a weekend, maybe not late enough.
Okay, everybody, which one's staff?
Or we could, or maybe you could do it similar to how we have the number of attendees do it, the time of operation shall be evaluated by the mayor.
Consolidate six and seven.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Karen? Anything else on the agricultural event facility? All right, next item, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
So if you would announce that item, please.
Our final item this evening is discussion of RZ fourteen zero-four to amend chapter sixty-four, article nine, administrative permits and use permits to create a new use permit for artist studio. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, it's come to the attention of the community development staff that there are businesses located within the city that operate artistic businesses that do not meet the standards as set forth in home occupation permitted as accessory use, section sixty-four dash two thirteen. The biggest obstacle to the artists is that they conduct their business in an accessory structure. These types of artists include photographers, painters, and sculptors that require larger workspaces. The intent of the development standards is to allow these types of uses to operate within AG one, R one, R two, R two A, commercial office and form-based codes. If within an AG or other residentially zoned district, a minimum of three acres would be required with no other buffer or setback requirements other than the district standards for accessory structures. And since this use permit would be a public hearing before the planning commission and city council, additional conditions may be proposed if needed. And so we have drafted for your review a proposed use permit for artist studios.
Bill?
Would artist studios include blacksmiths studios?
Well, we go back to the definition, which I think we didn't really discuss the new definition for artist studio, so if you want to go back to that, I think it's a little more explanatory about what it would include. What is this? So right now, it says artist studio means an establishment where articles or goods are produced, assembled, processed, or manufactured on a custom or individual basis by an artist, craftsman, or similarly trained or skilled operator, including but not limited to a painter, potter, metalworker, custom dressmaker, photographer, jewelry maker, woodworker, cabinet maker, and sculptor, and may include the sale of such goods.
Okay. Then in the, the last item here, we're talking about, where is it? Oh, three C. Only articles or goods produced, assembled, processed, or manufactured on the site shall be sold or exhibited in the studio or on the property. Well, I think we just purchased a sculpture that's going to be installed other than on the property where it was manufactured.
Isn't the intent that, that anything being sold there, it's manufactured on the property, but obviously it's being sold, it's going somewhere else.
Yeah, I think they're trying to keep the artist from opening up a retail store.
Isn't the intent that, that anything being sold there, it's manufactured on the property, but obviously, if it's being sold, it's going somewhere else.
Yeah, I think they're trying to keep the, the artist from opening up a retail store that sells things other than his own product.
That's the way I read it, too.
But I guess back to Bill's other question about blacksmith, does that definition allow a blacksmith?
I, I, I would say so. It includes metal working, yeah.
Or a glass blower.
Yep.
Yeah. So what was the logic behind limiting the number of people that can work on the property to including the resident? Because, let's say if somebody had, you know, some acreage, two people might not, you know, do it. But if it's, you know, small property, I could certainly understand that. So what, was there a, an idea there? Can we change including to be excluding the resident?
Yeah, and I think we can make that part of, of a condition based on the size of the property. You, you don't want to overwhelm the property with, with-
Right.
-parking spaces and people coming and going if it's small, but it's certainly if it's large enough and can absorb that.
You could, you could also condition it to where maybe that's a full-time employee or whatever, so that, you know, if it's a, some big pieces being done, they can bring other people in to help out, but.
Along those lines, what is our, what does it currently say for home-based business allows? Does it, it has a...
Yeah, Robin, how many employees are allowed in a home-based business? Is it two?
It's, it's the only, I mean, it's really the, only the resident can be a, and, and one other person, okay?
Yeah.
And then you can't have an accessory structure, so that's another reason why we need a, a use permit, because obviously, many times, you'll have a studio as an accessory structure. So I think the intent was to really keep it very small and intimate and not really go past what a, too much past what a home-based business would be like. If they really want to get heavy-duty into it, they probably need to look elsewhere as far as the number of employees and people coming.
I have a question on the same subject. I mean, obviously, the definition of work as well, who's doing what, the same artist I know that we were talking about earlier, they had, you know, a husband and wife working on the premises, plus they had another person coming in too. Right there, you have three. The wife is doing some of the booking, that in turn constitutes work as well, and want to make sure that we don't exclude that. So we just need to consider that also.
Yeah, and I, I, maybe the better thing to do, if you all agree, is that we leave that up as a condition that, on the case-by-case, so that it's not so restrictive, but because you're all looking at them each as an individual case, you would be able to take into consideration the, the size of the property and whatnot, and make that decision at the time of the use permit rather than us making very restrictive language in there.
I think that's a good idea, because I think either we need to change this to make sure we clarify it full-time, or who working, lives there or doesn't work there. You know, an artist could have his kids helping him out, and does that qualify as additional people? Or else just put it on a case-by-case basis, so.
Bill?
I'd be interested, I'd be interested to know how this fits with our, our blacksmith, our sculpture, sculptor, the one that we hired here recently. And in particular, looking at the size of the studio as it relates to the primary dwelling, I would, I think his shop is somewhere around probably 3,000 to 5,000 feet, which would mean he'd have to have a 20, his house would have to be 20,000 square feet.
And that is if, if you were doing your studio inside your house, closed it out. Maybe I read that wrong.
No, that's correct. It's within the structure, the primary residence.
Yours is an accessory structure.
But even so, I wonder, probably ought to pass this by him and see if he's legal in accordance with what we've written here, too.
Well, I guess this would not, he'd be grandfathered, correct?
No, he needs to come in for it.
No, he'd need to come in.
Yeah. And we have other artists, too.
Yeah.
You know, we've got photographers out there and others who would need this. But, you know, we're happy to, to run it by Michael Dillon, and I, I think that's a good point. We can certainly do that.
Marshall Dillon.
Okay, anybody else?
Just a little more general question. The item number two, as regards to channel constitute a nuisance, and just for my clarification, who decides what that nuisance is? Is it neighbors? Is it complaints? There's a number of complaints. I just wanted to verify that.
Candidly, it's, it's going to depend. I mean, a lot of times, most jurisdictions, that's going to be complaint-driven. Typically, it's going to be your neighbors. It could be code enforcement, it could be law enforcement. It's just one of those things, as you might expect, the whole concept of nuisance is a little bit in the eye of the beholder. The definition of nuisance in the Georgia codes is fairly broad, anything that causes hurt convenience or inconvenience. So it's just going to be one of those things where candidly, staff, code enforcement are going to have to make their best judgment call.
Okay. Okay, anything else? All right. Well, thank you, staff, and that'll conclude our work session.